To note that Commissioner Flores is not here tonight. He has a potential conflict of interest with this project because his company, the company that he works for, has a nearby project, so he would not have been able to participate. He would have had to recuse and would not have been able to participate in the meeting anyway, so therefore he has an excused absence this evening. Having said that, the rest of the commissioners, Commissioner Berenko.
Here.
Commissioner Cardoza.
Here.
Commissioner Hoff.
Here.
Commissioner Jeffrey.
Here.
Vice Chair Donaldson.
Here.
Chair Martin.
Here.
Six commissioners are present.
Thanks, Charlie. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to an item not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we'll go on to public hearings, and that's the MacArthur-San Pablo mixed-use project. I think, Maru, what we'll do is we'll have a presentation from staff, and then we'll hear from the applicant, and then we'll open the public hearing.
This is a joint Oakland-Emeryville project. The site is about 1.2 acres on the southeastern corner of San Pablo Avenue and West MacArthur. Most of the site lies in Emeryville, so Emeryville is taking the lead on this project. The Oakland Planning Commission will be hearing this project on December 5th. The planning requirements of each city apply on the portions within each jurisdiction. This black line is the boundary showing the Oakland-boundary. The project includes demolition of the existing buildings, construction of 84 condo units, 10 live-work units, about 5,600 square feet of ground commercial space. It's a five-story building. Parking is provided at one level, 15 non-tandem spaces, and 136 residential spaces are provided in parking lifts. This sort of shows you the unit type that the project involves. There are a variety of townhouse, two-bedroom townhouses, loft, two-bedroom units, as well as live-work units. In terms of the portion in Emeryville, most of the units are going to be two-bedroom units, and there are about five townhouse two-bedroom units, so a total of 65. In Oakland, all the live-work units are going to be located entirely in Oakland, and in addition to that, they would also have 19 other units. This is sort of the site plan. You have San Pablo here, 37th here, and West MacArthur here. This is the first level along San Pablo. It's the commercial space that I mentioned. Along 37th Street are the residential units, and then along MacArthur, you have the live-work units, and you have live-work units here as well. So all the live-work units are in Oakland. In between, you have the parking. These are residential parking spaces in lifts. These are the non-tandem parking spaces which would be used by commercial users as well as guest parking. In terms of entry to the project, you have the lobby to the residential component of West MacArthur, and the vehicular entry is also along West MacArthur, and the exit is onto 37th Street. As I noted, this is a podium building. You have a courtyard in between, and the units are lined up around it. There is one community room along each of the four levels. This is a landscape plan. They're introducing some additional street trees, as well as landscaping in the podium, in the courtyard. They're also proposing a green roof. The driveway here will be made of permeable substances, and there are pavers for the pedestrian walkway along the side here. I'm going to zoom through the elevations here because the applicant has an extensive presentation of its various elevations. So this is sort of the rendering. In terms of conformity to zoning standards, the use, the uses in Emeryville portion are multifamily, residential, and retail. All these uses are permitted with a use permit in the CG zone in which it is located. There is no prescribed density in the CG zone. The proposed density is 93 units per acre, which is a little higher than what is existing and built around it, like the Avalon is 75 and Dante 69. However, it is lower than the approved Adeline Place, which is kitty corner to this site. It lies in the 40-feet height district, where it can be increased to 55 with the use permit. The proposed height is 50 feet, which is about the same height as the Adeline Place, which I just mentioned is kitty corner around. The FAR is 0.7. It lies in the 0.7 district. The proposed is 0.18, since it's just 5,600 square feet of commercial space along San Pablo, so it does comply. In terms of parking, the residential component triggers 96 parking spaces. The commercial component triggers 15 parking spaces, 14 parking spaces. They need to provide 16 visitor parking spaces. The commercial and the guest parking or the visitor parking spaces can be shared, so the project does comply with the parking requirements. However, staff is recommending that they show four guest parking spaces along the driveway. Let me show you where that is. Along driveway right here. We are recommending that these be removed because we figure that this is not very functional, and landscaping instead of parking here would, the project would be better off with landscaping rather than parking. This would reduce the visitor parking space by one, so the project would then require a variance for one guest parking space, and we believe that this variance can be supported given the location of its site, location of the site. The project will need to meet affordable housing requirement in this project. When you have a joint jurisdiction, the total number is 20% of units in Emeryville or 10% of the total units, whichever is greater. And what this turns out to is 13 affordable units, and they will all need to be located in Emeryville. This project also requires a demolition permit since the existing Golden Gate Lock and Key Building is considered to be significant, and certain findings need to be made, which are listed on the overhead above you. This is also the reason why this project will go to the City Council for approval for both the demolition permits, the use permit, design review, as well as the variance. Initial study, I mean, to get a deck was prepared for the project and circulated for public review between August 31st and October 1st. No comments have been received. I received a one phone call from a neighbor, and she was in support of the project. That concludes my presentation. Our recommendation is to recommend approval to the City Council, subject to the conditions of approval. I do have minor edits and additions to the conditions of approval, but I'll bring that up later on after the discussion for the project is over. So if there aren't, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer, otherwise.
Any questions? Go ahead, Art.
You said that the new building had to have five characteristics that would make, justify the demolition of the old building. Did you say what those were?
You've been outlining your staff report on page 5.
Did you have a question about them, Art? I just wanted to know what they were. We're making a recommendation to the council, but aren't we also, do we, is it simply a recommendation for, I guess we're not certifying. It was an EIR, it was an MND, not an EIR, so I withdraw the question.
Well, you need to approve the MND before you make your recommendation, and then the council will also have to approve the MND before they vote on the project.
Because of the demolition issue?
Well, both, you're making a recommendation to the council on everything, and the council's making the final decision on everything. The advisory body needs to certify the MND or approve the MND also in addition to the decision-making body.
So did the applicant wish to make a presentation?
My name is Marsha Levinson, and I'm one of the partners in the development team, and I just want very briefly to say thank you very much for making this special committee meeting. We appreciate it very much. And also, my partner, Mark McDowell, talked to some of you before, and we had some comments in advance. I just want very briefly to address them. One was the bicycle parking spaces, that where some of them were outside, and that some of them are outside, and we're going to try to incorporate them in some kind of a secure environment, which architects will address more. The second was the landscaping on the eastern side of the building. We have a little bit of a problem there because this is Oakland area, and they require the fire truck access over there, which kind of eliminates big trees out of there, but again, we will revisit that side. And the third one was the roof deck, which we would like very much. We think it's a great idea, and unless it requires some extra variance or zoning regulations, which will take us another one and a half years, we would be very happy to do it. So this is the, now.
Hi. My name's Neil Kay. Presentation.
I'm going to ask you to talk right into that microphone.
Oh, okay. Neil Kay with the Toma Architects. The first slide is just a general image of the project as it's proposed.
You know, you've got a portable mic right below you. You can flip, there's a switch on the side, push it up till the green button goes on.
Right.
There you go.
How's that?
That's good.
This is, the project is seen from San Pablo and MacArthur avenues. One of the ideas that we're trying to emphasize is to create a strong corner, what we believe to be quite a significant site in Emeryville in Oakland. This is just a general overview of the project. I'll come back to this image in greater detail later on, but what I wanted to show were some of our general site strategies, as well as to help you locate it. MacArthur Boulevard's to the north, and San Pablo to the west, 37th Avenue to the south, and then to the east. You can see the alley that Maru was referring to, which is also the fire truck access for our project in Oakland. This is the ground floor plan. One of the things I'd like to emphasize on this, you know, apart from, you can actually we try to illustrate quite clearly where the division is between the two city boundaries, Oakland and Emeryville, is the way we've internalized the parking, which we think is sort of an urban strategy, is quite important. We've surrounded it on the left with commercial, and on the north, south, and east sides with either residential or live-work. On the San Pablo side, there's extensive commercial space, 5,600 square feet.
Can we go back one slide, please? Previously, I believe you had the lobby actually touching to the corner.
Correct.
And I'm curious why it's now been pushed off to the side.
There were several comments, I believe, that either came from staff in Emeryville, or, you know, I was at that original meeting, and I do remember that coming up. Staff, Emeryville staff seemed to believe or wanted us to create a significant corridor with, with commercial space, so we pulled the commercial to that corner, and then took the residential lobby and moved that over to MacArthur. So that's the current.
I believe that comment came from our economic development staff.
Because?
They felt that the corner was a prime retail location.
Okay. And previously, there were no bays along the San Pablo frontage. Now, the entrance into some of that commercial space is through bays that I assume are open to the sidewalk.
Correct.
And I'm curious why you made that change.
Um.
I'm concerned about what happens in those bays on San Pablo Avenue.
Right. You know, with, as far, you know, there's several reasons we often need to do that on commercial projects, is that with our emergency exits, this sort of becomes a building, a building permit issue later on, is that you can't have your emergency exits open directly onto a public right-of-way, which is a sidewalk. So regardless, you have to pull out several of your exits inside of your property line at least three or four feet. The size of this commercial space, there'll be at least two to three exits that we'll need to, in order to accommodate our exiting. You know, we can certainly look at trying to eliminate one or two, but, you know, they will, they'll absolutely have to be pulled back in at least two locations.
Okay.
What's your concern?
Yeah, urinating. Yeah. In them. Right.
This is the west elevation from San Pablo. It's proposing extensive commercial space with 20-foot seating heights. This is the corner. It's obviously changed since we last spoke, but what we try to do is energize it by placing retail and commercial space on that corner. Another view. This is the West MacArthur Boulevard, and just what I wanted to illustrate was the way the commercial space wraps around the corner, and then sort of wraps into the, into the residential entry. Through the residential entry. It's the residential lobby. What we've established in each lobby, both on the ground floor and then as you move up in the building, is communal space for each of the residences. And some images of what we'd imagine that those spaces to be like, where people could gather, you know, there could be newspapers put out on tables. This is the 37th Avenue elevation of the building. The, there's sort of a townhouse unit we've developed on this side of the project, and I believe that actually came out of a conversation we had with this planning commission, sort of a year ago, where we were asked to look at ways to energize the street. The residential units are pulled up two or three feet above the neighboring sidewalks to create a sense of privacy, and then there's sort of these porches that lead into the residential units themselves. And sort of closer view. This is sort of ground floor plan of those units, where you would have sort of a living/bathroom space, a few feet above grade to give privacy, and the bathroom at the back, the spiral stair that goes up into the, into the main living space, which could, which could have a study, a bedroom, or the main living space. That's quite a, quite a flexible unit type. This is the east elevation, looking on from the back alley, where we have added several live-work units. One of the reasons we needed to do this, in order to maintain our density for this project and to make it financially workable. We were over the density limit on the Oakland part of this project, and what they have permitted us to do is to add live-work spaces, so we have live-work on the ground floor, and then residential, residential above it. Sort of view of the, of the live-work spaces. They're actually triple-height spaces, and I'll show you the plans here. So you enter in on the ground floor, where there'll be a reception or lobby area. You can sort of go up the spiral stairs, and then these units themselves sort of back onto our main public courtyard of the project, but we imagine this space on the second level to be, would be used as part of the commercial or live-work space, if people who had their office would actually set this up as a work environment. And then above that would be the residential component. And this is switching back to MacArthur Boulevard, where you, on the left-hand side, we have the live-work wrap, the corner to the, right to the, to the border between Emery and Oakland, and then sort of moving back towards San Pablo Avenue, where you see the commercial space and the residential entry. Some more views.
So if you can go back one elevation. You have some, one of the points that I made in the earlier study session was to try to green up the entrance to, especially to these street-level units. Is that what you're trying to accomplish there on the right edge of the image with, it looks like bamboo or something?
Correct, yeah. Where we have, where we have these recessed bays, we've added planting areas.
Okay. And you intended to carry that treatment along the entire frontage? Because it's not shown on the landscape.
Yeah. You know, it depends on the way the plan is. The, the plan varies from side to side, but. Let me see if I can go back a little bit. It's not shown on that plan. There we go. So in, where it says PG&E fire, on the left-hand side, there's a small bay that could absolutely be used for planting, and, and depending on the size of our electrical room, we can pull that back, and that could be used for planting. But then where we, we have sort of an enclosed bay that pushes out towards the street, but then the porch or, the porch or deck area is pulled back, so, I mean, maybe we could add sort of a back grave planters in the porch area to help green that up.
Yeah. And between the PG&E box and the lobby entrance, you have a wall that backs up to trash?
Bicycle parking.
Trash rack? Well, I'm talking the trash area in the parking structure. Is that going to be a ventilated wall there, or is that a solid wall that faces West MacArthur?
Because of the, well, just because of the size of our parking, all of it will have to be ventilated, so we'll be vent, so we'll use the same ducts to ventilate the trash room.
No, I mean, open grate.
Sorry?
Is the wall going to be an open grate facing West MacArthur, or is that a solid wall?
The parking will, will be open grate, but behind it will be solid wall.
Isn't that trash loading space, isn't there a roll-up door there, so you can roll the trash bins out onto MacArthur?
West MacArthur? Oh, I didn't realize that.
Well, I mean, there's a cut in the curb shown.
Right.
Is that the intention in the design there?
Correct. They're loading the trash on that side. So in this view, which is a blow-up of the ground floor plan, I'm trying, I'm trying to indicate the parking, but in, the yellow spaces on the far right are the, are the four places that Maru is suggesting we get rid of as visitor parking. And what we can, and now that this issue of bicycle, having secure bicycle space has come up, what we could potentially do is plant that up for the first two feet towards the property line, and then maybe create an enclosed gated or fenced bicycle storage area.
You're talking about the east side of the driveway?
Yeah, so just over here, where we have those four parking bays. So create a secure enclosed bicycle storage around here.
And eliminate those four parking stalls?
Well, that's what Emeryville's planning department was recommending.
What about the, right now, you've designated bicycle parking in the landscape area up on the West MacArthur frontage.
Right. There's significant bicycle parking we need to accommodate. There are 90 stalls. Right now, on the, on the interior, we've got about 45 or 50. So what we're proposing was having exterior bike, bike stalls, but in this neighborhood, there's a concern about security. So what we're wondering is if the park, if the visitor parking's removed, then we could have more secure bike parking over there, or in this top-left-hand corner. Sorry, top-right-hand corner. This is to show the building setback on the drive aisle. The dashed lines show what the permitted building envelope is, so for 50% of the site along the east edge, we have a 29-foot setback, and then it drops to 15, but, but throughout, we're well within the permitted bulk of the project.
What, what are you proposing in terms of fencing along the property line on that eastern edge?
That is to be planted. So some sort of bamboo planting.
So you would do, what, what kind of a fence would you use, or would, to secure that side of the property? Are you going to install a fence, or is it just going to be landscaping?
Either way. I mean, I, right now, the proposal was just to have landscaping, but if it was a security issue, we could certainly look at putting in, putting in some sort of fence.
The landscape plan actually shows a planting screen.
Right. Which is over here.
And so I'm, and along the north wall as well, where it faces West MacArthur, all the way up.
Right, along here, correct.
Right. And so what was, was that going to be a six-foot vine-covered screen, or what was the idea there?
I believe the material that was called up was bamboo, was a sort of a vertical plant material.
Oh, so it wasn't a structure with vines on it?
No. Well, that, if it's adequate planting, I think it would probably be okay.
So could you go back to the previous screen, please? The one that had the angles, the building envelope angles?
Right.
Yeah, I was just wanting to understand, on the south side of the property, it's not a 29-foot.
Right, so on the south side, right, the property line steps back, so this is on the north side, and then this is on the south side. So the worst-case condition, we're still well, well within the permitted building envelope, which is what this line represents.
Right, and you have about a 15-foot setback from the property line there?
Exactly, right.
Including the 10-foot drive aisle?
That, that's the Oakland requirement.
Correct.
Correct, for, for stepping down.
And then the driveway, as it continues to 37th.
Right.
You've got 12 feet of driving and?
Three feet of pedestrian.
Three feet for pedestrian.
Right.
And it looks like no space for any planting.
Right.
Until over half the width of the lot. Is there any flexibility? First off, I'm wondering what the emergency vehicle requirement is for a driveway of that width. I wasn't sure about trash. Now I understand how trash is getting out of there. What's needed for fire trucks, if fire trucks are going to have to go down, or is that one of the requirements? I'm wondering if that has been looked at, because that seems awfully narrow from what we've heard before as a minimum requirement.
I'm told the fire department has reviewed these plans, has not commented on that. That portion of the project is in Oakland, and I'm not sure that a fire truck needs to go down there.
Right.
Typically, the rule is that if you're within 150 feet of a public street, then the fire access can be from the public street, and I'm pretty sure, I don't think this lot is more than 300 feet wide.
Right.
Is it, so they should be able to access it from either 37th Street or West MacArthur Boulevard.
Okay. As long as we don't need to worry about emergency vehicles going through that.
Well, the fire department has not raised the issue to this point, and they have seen these plans.
They've provided conditions.
Oh, they've provided conditions of approval as well.
So if there are perhaps a few feet, we can steal from that drive aisle and go down to a 10-foot drive aisle, we could give 12 inches or a foot to plant.
To get something vertical.
Yeah, definitely.
That was one of my points earlier.
Okay. We'll absolutely look at that. Cross-section through the project. Again, back to the roof plan. You know, what I wanted to emphasize here is, A, the green-planted roof. I mean, all the, all the plantings we're proposing, as well as our strategy for the roof, is to help mitigate surface runoff, which, you know, is a, is a huge concern. The courtyard itself is planted, planted, and then in the northeast corner of the project, which we've discussed. This is what we'd imagine the roof to look like, planted with native grasses. We're hoping it would be sort of, it's lower maintenance, so it's not like you need to go up there every two weeks with a lawnmower. You know, it just maybe requires a weed whacker every six months.
And the access onto the roof?
That, as, as the project sponsor, Marsha, mentioned earlier on, the current proposal just shows sort of required emergency access to the roof, but what we'd like to do is take a roof deck up to the roof, so it's a kind of amenity that everyone can enjoy, as well as provide great views.
Yeah, this would be a great experience for everyone in the building, so.
Then a sort of, sort of view, drilling down to the courtyard, which shows the unit layout around the main central courtyard. First image of the courtyard. One of the, in the early discussions we had with the planning commission, it was a lot sparser, and so we've gone back, we've met with our landscape designers, who've come up with what we think to be quite a brilliant plan. You know, the idea is also to make it a lot denser, sort of this urban jungle or oasis in the middle of the city, where there could be sort of moments of respite, and you could have areas that you could read, and sort of kids, for kids to play. That's the material palette for that courtyard. This is the typical floor plan. Just would like to quickly go through the unit types. There's a one-bedroom unit type. If you want me to sort of add in additional information of questions, I can dwell on the unit types, or so, I'll quickly go through them. It's up to you.
Yeah, can, can you explain in that center area on that, that's?
That one?
No, 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 on the, the single unit.
Right.
On the unit plan.
Right.
Are those sliding, sliding walls, or something that can be used to create some privacy within the units?
Correct, exactly.
Or are they totally open-plan units?
No, they're sliding glass walls, and sort of glass partitions. We, I, it's, just a little bit further on in the presentation, I have some renderings of that interior of the unit, as well as some units we've built, which are of a similar type. And there's sort of this idea about general flexibility, where we have these sliding glass or, or sort of Japanese screens, so can I either have the space as an open loft-like space, or close them off to be private bedrooms, so it offers people flexibility, you know, coupled with a kid that could be occupied that way, could be a person, a single person with an office, it could just be a couple. This is the one-bedroom type.
The, the, it's hard to read on your elevations what the window situation is like.
Right.
Could you explain that?
Sure. There's actually some slides that are on, so if you could just hold off a bit, I can go into that in more detail. That's the one-bedroom type. So the two-bedroom type, and, yeah, oh, go back a bit. So, and these are the sort of sliding glass doors that can separate off each of the bedrooms. And what we do is we combine the bathrooms, so you have a powder room and then a sort of shower toilet, so both, so you have two bath, two half-bathrooms in a way, and so that each, a person can get access to washing while someone else uses the pollution facilities, and then, you know, this, and if these are left open, you sort of have this really wonderful, generous open space, which I think is more clearly articulated or visualized in this And this is a standard loft unit. So this is a, a unit we recently completed in San Francisco, which I'd just like to point out, some of the things we're using here. One is, you know, these sort of sliding glass doors, which will help break up the space. In this case, there's actually closets behind it, but further down, you know, this way on the plan, there's a series of bathrooms, which the sliding glass doors partition out. But, you know, this idea about one large, open livable space, which has a kitchen that looks into it. Also, which I think pertains particularly to this San Pablo project, is the use of the sunshades or vertical horizontal louvers that we've, that are shown on, I guess, the material board that Maru has. But what's important from, from this perspective is how transparent the, the actual sun louvers are from the inside. So, you know, from the outside, it creates a sense of privacy, helps mitigate direct solar gain, but from the inside, you really get these great expansive views out.
But they're, they're stationary, right?
Correct, they're stationary. We have done a project now, right now in San Francisco, which is the first time operable sunshades have been used on a residential building, the Bay Area, which I can, which I can show you. You know, we proposed the San Pablo project before this, before this material became available to us, and it's just actually been imported from Holland, so it's something we can certainly investigate, and if the budget allows, we can look at, at using operable sunshades too.
How do you wash the windows?
This is actually my apartment. This is actually my apartment, it's something I did last week. We power wash them from the outside, sort of once, you know, once a year, you go up with a cherry picker. And then from the inside, because the windows are actually staggered, the slide is pulled back, you can get in with a squeegee and clean it.
And so the idea is not to paint the aluminum, it's?
No.
Okay. I sort of remember a white, my image was more white than metallic.
The proposal's just, would be to use just clear anodized.
Okay.
I get, so I can go through each of the individual materials now, but what you start, the intention is to kind of create this vertical articulational base of the project to sort of create a humane scale to the streets. So it kind of helps break down the overall mass of the building by several ways. One is, you know, you start reading a strong vertical rhythm, but also as it cuts in at each balcony bay, it helps break up the roof line. So where the bays push out is what we're proposing would be the sunshade. And then you see balconies that get pushed back where you have clear glazing. And then the side walls would be painted hardy plank, which I believe you have a sample on the material board. So really just, and then aluminum frame glass windows, sorry.
And the surface treatment to the lobby and the community rooms above it?
Right, so that we're proposing a horizontal louver, which has a larger spacing and, you know, the intention would be to articulate sort of the corner. The ground floors would be all plate glass, floor-to-ceiling glazing. And up above, we might, what we're proposing here is just to carry the sun, the horizontal louvers over to at least begin to join these two parts of the project together.
So one would have a spacing of, say, ten inches and the other would have two-inch spacing?
Correct, right. And the one that would have, say, the ten inch spacing would be deeper, so that she does operate as a sunshade. This is a project we just completed in San Francisco on Howard. One, two, three, four, Howard, it's Howard and Ninth. And it's several lessons here. One is sort of, again, this vertical articulation, which was a single lot, by sort of dividing it into three objects, one being a void, it'll break down the mass of the project, as well as what you can see. These are the horizontal operable louvers, which the residents of the building can actually control from the inside. So during the course of the day, the building's shape or form slowly changes depending on whether they want privacy or not. It's the view of the project at night. There's sort of direct relationships between what we're proposing for this mixed-use project. This is a project we did on Folsom Street in San Francisco. What we tried to indicate here is a sort of pulled-back balcony, which kind of creates a sense of privacy for the residences, but allows you to look out from the street, as well as it's Howard permits a deep light into the unit.
And what's the balcony rail, is that?
This was actually the same stuff, it's that horizontal bar grating.
And that's what you're proposing?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you have any pictures of the window situation on the walkways?
The, well, not, nothing.
Is it glazed all the way across?
It's glazed, correct. But what we proposed would be high windows, so it allows cross-ventilation within the unit itself and sort of brings light into the sort of second bedrooms from up high, but offers privacy.
That wouldn't be visible.
Right.
So this is like, you actually have a glass panel for the balcony rail?
Yeah, it's not that legible, I mean.
That's not what you're proposing?
No, I think in this case, we'd be proposing the bar grating. Maybe something with wider spacing, so it helps articulate the difference between the two, between the two bays. Again, the sort of vertical striations back. So this is the project we completed on Folsom Street. Several things here, one is, again, the sort of the vertical bays, it creates a rhythm on the street and the clear articulation of a horizontal line, which we would have on San Pablo, where there was, we would have the commercial area and then residential above. And then over here, we set the building back, not as much as what, more than what we're proposing here, but as you can see, it still breaks down the building's mass, which is on the alley, which we're proposing on the alley frontage. And that's the Folsom project at night. This is the closer view of the bays.
Could you go back to the Folsom project at night and describe how that would relate to the transparency and the lighting for the San Pablo?
I think, you know, this Folsom project was slightly different because we had a sort of an irregular bay, there were the strong vertical bays, but then there was an irregular pattern that was established with the glazing. But I think what's interesting is that the, you know, as the, when the units get lit up from the inside and sort of it happens on the one, two, three, five, on the ten-twenty-eight Notoa project, which is an earlier project I showed you, which was the inside units, is that the light catches the inside of the horizontal louvers, the sunshades. And so it kind of helps pop those out, so the bay itself sort of recedes more and the horizontal louvers or the aluminum sunshades kind of pull forward. So again, you get that pushing and pulling and helps sort of further articulate the verticals. So here, we used horizontal channel glass, which illuminates like a lantern, and then the bay gets pulled back. So instead of the horizontal channel glass, we're using horizontal sun louvers. You'd have a clear bit of glazing that looks into the unit and then the balcony that's recessed.
Can I ask a question about the balcony? Is there exterior lighting in the balcony area?
There would be exterior lighting up in each suffered as well, up in here, above each one, a single spotlight. Let's leave Maru with the numbers, but if you have any additional questions, I can, that's it, thank you.
Any other, any questions for the applicant or for staff? Thanks, we might have more questions.
I have a question. Looking at this San Pablo and MacArthur frontage, what is the distance from the building to the curb line?
Ten, fifteen feet? Ten feet, ten feet to the curb line.
Ten feet. Because we had been, in our general plan considerations, we've been seriously thinking of having a minimum average sixteen-foot setback so that the streets are usable. Ten feet doesn't sound very usable to me. And if you look at your picture, could you go back to the picture? You show, take the corner there. Is that building setback in the corner or is that just a?
No, it's clear glazing, so you look.
It's optical illusion?
Well, not optical illusion, but glass sort of tends to be transparent during the day. So what the intent is that that whole ground floor lands up being more transparent. So it does get a sense of the commercial space, sort of spilling into the street or vice versa. On a project we're currently proposing on Fulton, which actually has a ten-foot sidewalk, where we've lined it with commercial, and on the ground floor, we have, we've proposed operable windows. We've used sort of glass garage doors, which are glazed panels, and those open up into the store itself. So during the day, the owners of the, of the commercial space can open it up and create these really wonderful.
In your.
Table areas.
In your west elevation, page one, you show all these wonderful tables and things on the sidewalk. That's not possible in ten feet of sidewalk, so.
Well, that's, I sort of want confirmation from your planning staff, what their distance is from our property line to the curb.
It's shown us about ten feet.
You're representing a very usable sidewalk area with tables and chairs in this picture and on the corner, but as a matter of fact, it's not usable at all.
Well, no, I disagree. I think if, as we're proposing, if you have operable glazing or garage doors on that ground floor, you can, those chairs or tables could certainly be pulled in within our building envelope, so you would have free passage on the sidewalk and the sense of the commercial speed.
You're suggesting that all the commercial spaces along that street will have openable walls?
Not all of it, but certainly part of it could have, yes.
Open walls?
Mm-hmm.
You know, if your, if your scale is correct on your drawing, the sidewalk looks like it's more like eight feet.
Well, I scale it to about twelve. I think if you look at the.
The bar scale.
If you look at the ground floor plan and just look at the driveway on Thirty-seventh Street, Thirty-seventh Street, by the way, not Avenue, it appears that the sidewalk on San Pablo is about the same width as that driveway. I would say that it presumably is whatever the width of the sidewalk is currently. Because they're, I don't believe they're proposing to move the curb and the front of the building will be the same location where the front of the existing building is.
Do you know what it is?
I don't know, I'm just saying here, it's, looks like it scales to about twelve.
There's no zoning code in place now that says the building has to be set back.
No, but we have, but we have the discretion to require it.
I don't think you could defend that.
Yeah, I mean, we, honestly, this project's been in, been on the boards with both Emeryville and Oakland for, well over a year in a sense about adding additional setback on San Pablo.
I realize, I realize you can't set the whole building back at this late stage, you know, I wouldn't even venture to suggest that. But have you ever thought of creating an arcade where just the bottom floor? You know, I've been to Europe and in many cities, they have these wonderful buildings where the bottom floor is actually set back.
Right.
And you walk under a series of columns. Now you have real open space that's usable, not if and when you get a commercial space. So had you given any thought to that where you could?
No, but it's actually a really interesting idea.
Really make the sidewalk and the building fuse together by setting it back with a series of columns that wrap around on MacArthur Boulevard? Then I think you have some really interesting space that not only the residents of the building could utilize, but the general public.
Well, you know what, we need to stick to, we need to stick to questions and we'll have comments after we have opened the public hearing.
Well, I asked him if it's possible, he shook his head.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
With that, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? This is your opportunity to address the project, address the commission. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Were there any questions of staff on the mitigated negative declaration or to the consultant? No questions? I'm actually wondering why in the traffic section, there wasn't a requirement for a TDM plan? There was a construction management plan, but there's some discussion about significant change to certain intersections. I'm just surprised we don't have that standard language that talks about paying the traffic impact fee and the other typical requirements.
Well, the traffic impact fee is a standard requirement in our city code, so they will.
Right, but it's usually tied to the significance of the increased traffic that's discussed in.
No, not the traffic impact fee. The traffic impact fee applies to all projects.
I understand that, but isn't it supposed to address the impacts of the project on the surrounding street system? That's why they pay the fee. I'm just wondering why.
That doesn't have to be included in the CEQA document. I mean, the traffic impact fee is imposed on projects that are exempt from CEQA.
Okay, why does this project not have a TDM?
Maybe the consultant can address that?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Adam Weinstein from LSA Associates. We worked on the initial study mitigated neg deck. In regard to the transportation section and the transportation analysis, we looked at the impacts of the project in the context of the criteria of significance that are set forth on page seventy-nine and I think it skips over to eighty-three of the document. And Commissioner Martin, you're right, in certain cases, there, the project is resulting in congestion on certain roadways and intersections, but that, those congestion levels don't exceed the criteria of significance that the City of Oakland and the City of Emeryville are using. And so although congestion is being caused by the project, there's no significant impact and it's that significant impact that requires mitigation, which is why we didn't include requirements for TDM in the initial study.
Thanks for the explanation.
Sure.
Do we want to make a motion on approval of the mitigated neg deck and then talk about the project?
Do we need to do two separate ones?
Yes, we do. You want to do it all at once? Are we all awake here? Okay, well, let's go into.
Go for it.
Let's go into, let's go into design issues with the project then. Are there any questions of staff or the consultant before we start weighing in on the project itself?
No, we already asked questions.
Okay.
No, I actually do have a question on one of the proposed conditions of approval that had to do with multi-tenant standards and uses subject to performance standards.
What page do you want?
I'm looking at page twenty-four on the conditions of approval. And it seems that section two would require that if there were any kind of eating, food, beverage, drinking, a number of different types of retail uses put there, that they would, that would trigger additional parking requirements? Could you explain what that implication might be? On page twenty-four, section C subsection two is listing things and says they must meet the performance standards and review criteria set forth on the next page. And the next page, number four B, is confirmation that required parking spaces meet the requirements of the Emeryville Municipal Code.
Well, that's what it means. I mean, this is a standard condition of approval and it basically says that we're supposed to check to make sure that there's enough parking before signing off on these things. Food and beverage, retail sales, eating and drinking establishments and so forth.
So is your point that once the project's built, there's no control over the available parking?
No, well, no, I'm just, I was just wondering if we're looking at a very, a reduced number of parking spaces, what the implications are if some other use comes in that requires more parking spaces?
Right. How can that, how would that be addressed? If there's a use that comes in after the project's been constructed and according to this condition, it may require some additional parking?
Well, I guess, like it says, they're permitted subject to those performance criteria. If they can't meet the performance criteria, then they're not permitted.
Considering the lack of excessive renting properties along San Pablo, it's not going to be a problem immediately.
Right.
What it means, though, is that some uses would probably not be allowed to go in there because they would generate more parking, so that's going to constrain the kind of use that's going to be able to go in on the ground floor.
Or could they come back to the commission for a variant, a parking variance?
Or alternatively, in your approval or recommendation to the planning, to the city council, you could delete that condition. Or modify it if you see fit to do so, considering that this is a transit corridor. There's a lot of public transit access around here.
I'd rather leave it in there, especially with the noise generating issues that are addressed in this condition, but.
Well, no, I mean, you could just delete the one about parking. You could delete the condition four B on page twenty-five.
I would prefer keeping it in.
And then if they need a variance, they can come back to us and get a variance.
All right.
I want to, on page fourteen of the conditions, there's a requirement for a minimum of a ninety-five bicycle parking spaces, which raises this whole issue of how you fit the bicycle parking. My sense is that's excessive. If somebody's got a bicycle and they really want to protect it, they'll bring it up to their unit. And I think to dedicate this much of the ground level to bicycle parking, if we can have the plan that shows the bicycle parking on the east side of the driveway and I guess the site plan is probably the best thing to show there. I think it's a mistake to have bicycle, a quote, contained bicycle area outside the building. I think it's just going to be an attractive nuisance, the bicycles, you know, there's going to be a constant break-in, whether it's the segment, that was great. There's a portion designated on this plan up on West MacArthur. I'd rather that be dedicated to landscaping.
That's in the building.
Right. Right, right there. And I assume that was going to be like a cyclone contained space there. I just think it's a mistake. I would, I would like to see the requirement, first, I'd like to know why. I don't recall a standard, a per-unit standard for bicycle parking. And I'm wondering where that ninety-five bicycle spaces came from as a requirement.
We, our staff is working on a bicycle parking requirement to add to the zoning ordinance at some point. And right now, it's kind of a work in progress. I think at the time that this report was written, we were thinking of one space, one bicycle parking space per unit. But I have discussed this with Diana Kena, our staff person who's working on that ordinance. And I think she feels that this, I guess the thinking has evolved and she tends to agree with you that they would, people would probably store their bicycles in their units. One space in the garage or in a secured area per unit is probably more than would be needed. I can't give you an exact number, but it, that one space per unit is probably not really needed.
I just, I don't want to see them trying to solve this requirement, pushing it outside the building area.
Yeah, this is not a requirement of the zoning ordinance currently. It's something we're simply suggesting through the conditions of approval. So you certainly have latitude to modify that however you see fit.
How many bicycles did you say were accommodated inside the building?
This space, you could probably get fourteen to sixteen. And say we could get another ten here to push. So twenty to thirty.
Could you tie those two spaces together and, and make it a lockable?
Right.
It's just a room?
We could do that.
And, and the, so the kind of spacing, this, your, this was accommodating like one bike?
Yeah, so it's independently accessible, you just bring it in.
I would say that.
There are, you know, newer where you can have two bike.
Stacked.
Stacked, yeah, going vertically.
Stacking the piles.
Well, there are standards for bicycle parking and we, I believe we've referenced those. And they do actually, believe it or not, have dimensions very similar to the dimensions for a, a motor vehicle parking lot. I think it's like a four-foot aisle down the middle and then six feet on either side for bicycles. You park two bikes per rack and the racks have to be X number of feet apart. So you can, we haven't, I don't believe we've done this in this case, but you can look at a plan like this and using those standards, you can real quickly calculate how many bikes you can fit in there.
Yeah, but it's in that.
But the standards are being changed, you said, right?
No, the number we would require, the number of bicycle parking spaces we would require is a work in progress. But the standard of the dimensions of the size of parking spaces is a pretty fixed thing.
But that's based on how people used to store bikes? I mean, that's not going to be revisited, you think?
No, it's based on a very recent study by the, whatever it's called, American Bicycle Planning Professionals or something like that. It's, it's, I think it's listed in here, isn't it?
It's listed in the conditions on page fifteen.
It's the.
Study, but I think you have a good point.
I mean, that's still.
The Association of Pedestrian and Bicycle Professionals Bicycle Parking Standards, spring two thousand and two.
So what I'd like to do is suggest that the language to, on page fourteen, under parking and transportation number six one, or six A one B be revised. And rather than specifying a number of bicycle parking spaces, that the bicycle parking be set based on the secured bicycle parking indicated on the site plan. Use that space to fit as many bicycles and make sure that the space is completely secure and it is used exclusively for bicycle storage. I don't want this to be stored for something else. But I don't, I, I don't want them to have to redo the building footprint. I don't think we can predict how many bicycles are going to fit in this oddly shaped area designated secured bicycle parking if there's certain corridor standards or something else that have to be met. So if we indicate thirty, I don't think we're going to get thirty in there based on that standard in this.
Well, if they had eighty-five in these three spaces before.
They were looking at wayward parking.
Oh, but this, this is only, this is less than either of those.
Yeah, but all four of the stalls there were going to be eliminated for bicycle. I'd rather not specify a number.
Yeah, no, that was, that, what they were proposing was doing away with that.
I would prefer that you set some minimum because just for staff's benefit, when this comes back to us a year or so from now for plan check for the building permit, it's tough for us to do plan check if we don't know what we're checking.
Well, how about we use the word minimum twenty? And then whatever more that can be fit into those two spaces.
I mean, if we, based on the, on these criteria that were just read out to me now, I don't think we'll get twenty without, without either losing parking stalls or changing the, the building.
Well, I live in a condominium here in Emeryville that has a bike room and it's not much bigger than this and we get seventy bikes in it.
But based on these requirements.
Right, these standards are what I'm concerned about.
Vertically. The bikes are stored vertically.
Yeah, well, that's the way you always store a bike, is vertically.
I, I mean, it's just that, those standards are kind of, that's like the very, that's the old flat, one bike. They're all on the same level. They're not, that's the old way.
Is there a code requirement for keeping that standard in there? The reference to the.
No. No, but I mean, that's the only standard we've got these days and it seems like a pretty good one. How, how about if you just reference these plans? The plans dated October twenty-fifth, two thousand, two thousand and seven, sheet A one point one. The bicycle parking area is shown on that plan. However, many spaces will fit in there is what's required.
That's my suggestion.
That work? Oh, okay.
That, that it be secured, the entire area be secured. Right now, only half of it's secured. And that it be used exclusively for bicycle storage.
Okay.
It's going to be up to the homeowners association. They'll work out a way to juggle as many bikes as they can in that space.
They usually forbid them on balconies too.
Do you have the dimensions of that room? Do you know about how big it is, that square room?
Square, it's two parking stalls.
Twenty by twenty. Well, the minimum width for a park, bike parking room would be sixteen feet because you need two rows of parking, six feet plus an aisle, four feet. So you could fit two rows of parking in there, eighteen feet long. I think would, that would, I think you could fit twenty bikes in there.
So I, I would reiterate what Patty said, which is we said, just say this minimum space is provided and then it could be up to the homeowners association or, you know.
They can do whatever they want to do.
I would suggest you keep that standard in there for, of, of the, what it says, you know, the American.
That's fine.
So at a minimum, that standard.
And so what we would do is the, the bike area that's located in that, in the bio-retention area. I'm assuming that's for C three purposes, that landscape area you have on.
Yeah, well.
Just, and, and replace that with landscaping.
Absolutely. That's great. I think it's a great suggestion.
And, and I'd like to suggest that those four parking stalls that you were going to dedicate to parking be instead be dedicated to landscaping and some additional improvement. You've got, this is a large vertical mass. My primary concern in terms of the design, other than the fact that I liked it, was that this is a really abrupt transition from the existing residential neighborhood to the east, which needs improvements, but will be improved eventually. And we're going straight up. And I want to maximize the amount of vertical landscaping there. And I'd like to see those four parking stalls dedicated to the bamboo. We talked, the clumping bamboo we talked about or something that's going to go up forty or fifty feet, not three fifteen-gallon sycamores that aren't going to do much for a long time. I mean, you have solutions there that we talked about before that will address this within a year or two. If it's well-designed. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about that, but.
I agree.
I don't know if timber bamboo is the right answer, but I definitely think we should do away with these V one through four parking spaces and make it landscaping.
It's problematic for access with people trying to park in those stalls and obstructing people getting into the garage, so.
Is, is this going to be gated or not, the driveway?
No.
Well, then this could become kind of a campground for people back in here, but I, that's not our problem.
Well, there will be six live-work units fronting on it.
Yeah, that's true.
Chair Martin?
I'm concerned that the fire standards are going to be a problem on the south side, but it seems like the residence at the southeast side of this property is going to be the one most impacted. It's got a tiny setback considering the fifty-foot height next to it. And I'm just wondering what can be done to mitigate for that.
And you talked about possibly getting two feet out of the driveway with.
Depending on what happens on, for the discussions with Oakland and clearly there are no indications that this actually needs to maintain. We need to maintain a fire truck access. We could perhaps put a ten-foot drive aisle in, get or even eleven foot and then take that additional foot and dedicate that to exactly the same kind of bamboo planting you're recommending in the, in the northeast quadrant of the property.
So what's the grade change as you drop down into the park?
It's two feet.
Okay, so are you going to, I'm looking at the.
It's a section of that.
The landscape plan and it actually shows the footprint of that residence to the east, to the southeast of the site.
Some plan too.
And it's got the wall of that building right against your property line. How are you going to address?
Right, and I think, I think by using your suggestion and narrowing the drive aisle, adding a one-foot or eighteen-inch planter that was at the same level of the neighboring property, then using that as a retaining wall to come down to two feet.
Because I, I don't see how you're going to accomplish this without some setback from their foundation.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
The other thing in terms of landscaping, I would like to see a fence constructed around the entire eastern perimeter. A six-foot solid fence. I think they're just.
Solid?
Well.
You can't do it against that house on Thirty-seventh Street because there's probably windows on that side.
I'd like, it's a good point. Not, not where the house, I guess my concern especially is up on West MacArthur. I don't know what the condition of the fence is there on the property line. But to simply have a hedge or some other planting there, I think there needs to be a clear, clear definition. I would think you'd want a fence there frankly. I guess it, it doesn't need to be solid, but I'd like to see some kind of fence there.
It's really useless for the condominium.
The fence to screen, to screen whatever's in the backyard?
Piece of property that sticks back there.
Along West MacArthur?
Yeah.
Right, well, that's going to be lovely landscaping. That's going to enhance the frontage along West MacArthur.
But is it open? If you put a fence in front of it, it's not.
No, the fence, the fence would be along the south edge.
Yeah, just along the property line.
To separate what's going to be a landscape open area from the rear yard of that existing residence.
Just wraps around.
And the view to the, to the east from the back of the building into the backyard of those existing residences.
And these live-work, I guess, face it too, so that.
It's, yeah, I'm not sure how attractive the backyard area is of those units right now. But I imagine a fence would be appreciated in both directions. And then, you know, I had suggested to the applicant the idea of getting up on the roof, even with a small deck that people in the building could use and appreciate if you can accommodate. I don't see that as a necessary condition, but if you can get up there, I think it's going to be one of the nicest places in your whole building.
Fire department require a stairway to the roof?
Just one stairway, but if we want to have access to it, we, we would just take an elevator, our elevator and both stairways up to the roof because we need to have two exits and then a roof deck. So I don't see any reason it couldn't be achieved.
Spectacular.
I don't know, you'd have to take an elevator to the roof.
Well, if it, if it's, if it's public.
It has to be accessible. You're an architect, you should know weather.
If it's official. I think the last point, if we can go to the ground level, the last design point I had is, Art, I think you, the sidewalk width is also of concern. I don't see the building moving back, but maybe you can work with staff in perhaps connecting the bays on the San Pablo frontage. So instead of these, you know, tight indentations at the ground level that you set the ground floor back between the two northern bays, I'd like to get rid of the southern of the three because that impinges the view into the corner and from the corner. It makes that space very poor and functionless there. And if there's a way to connect them, so the indentation is part of the building itself rather than some code requirement and something with very limited visibility, this is going to be a challenging area to keep clean. And the more open it is and more connected it is, the better for the people in the building and people going down the sidewalk. And I, my sense is if you can work with staff to possibly connect those two bays.
Which bays are you talking about?
I'm talking about the two northern indentations, that, yeah, those two.
Connect them.
Connect them so there's an indentation in the building, you get the tables that are shown on the elevation and create some exterior space. I don't know what that does to your design. Or were these indentations going to be solid walls or is that going to be the open glass?
That was going to be, that was going to be glass. I mean, they, these indentations were tracking part of the rhythm we developed on the facade. So I mean, we'll need to go back and study that elevation to see what, joining.
Structural columns that might have to come.
Yeah, I mean, we could probably cantilever, yeah, I mean, we will, there are, yeah, that's not showing is any of the columns that are on this ground floor except in the parking structure. I think we'll need to go back and study this elevation a little bit more to understand if joining, I, I think it'll be fine, but joining these two bays together, what that does to, to step, to that rhythm that we've clearly established on the facade.
I just think the third bay is a mistake in terms of the design. It cuts off visibility of the corner and makes that, that space down there functionless. And what's, I don't, I don't want it to become a closet or storage area on the street level, which is what I fear it's going to become.
Can we, can we look at it, at an elevation of that?
And could you speak a little to the transparency of the ground floor, the treatment?
The bays, oh, that's these, huh?
The shadowed area on the street.
That would be these three bays here, one, two, and three. So what you'd be asking would be to join this across and, you know, there's a clear rhythm here, this series of U's. But this one, we could, you know, we'll absolutely, I think this one needs to be enclosed on the plan. And we could look at this, what, what needs to happen here.
With these tables you have along the sidewalk, are those between the street trees? Or, Art, you have a good point. It looks like a little crafts fair going on on the sidewalk or something. What are you trying to do here?
Liven up the street.
San Pablo Avenue, right?
It's a disingenuous plan.
That's just a decoration.
It's decoration.
Okay.
People is foliage.
I think it's inadequate.
Well, I don't see that as a condition. I see that as something you can work out with staff. But I, does everyone else have a concern about that third bay in particular and what it does to the commercial viability?
I think staff should work that out too, because that residual space is meaningless.
Yeah, especially if it's going to be glass. It looks like you have a vertical treatment in the glass there or is that the cinder block back wall?
Yes, you're seeing the wall.
At the ground.
Oh, like, yeah, yeah, it's probably a rendering error. This should be, you'd probably read this horizontal line as being a stronger element.
Right, so can you, can you speak to the transparency on the ground floor? Is it glazing behind louvers or what is going on exactly on the ground floor?
In this rendering, we're proposing on carrying the louvers down, but as I, as I indicated on that, the rendering of, showed you in the image of the, of the apartment, when you're actually on eye level with those louvers, they read as completely transparent. It's only when you sort of pull back and look up that they become more opaque. So the sort of transparency that, that you see is actually what will be apparent when you're at eye level on grade.
Right, now, my point was what's behind the louvers, is it all transparent?
Yeah, it will be glazing.
On San Pablo frontage, there's louvers on the ground level?
Yeah, that's what you're seeing here, coming down and then wrapping up.
So it's not going to be just the plate glass, there will be the louvers.
No, in this rendering, it's showing it as, as being a series of louvers coming down.
Where is this connection with the street?
Okay, so that's, so that's different than.
Except at the corner, it's clear glass. Is that on the far left of that elevation?
Yeah, that's, it's clear plate glass.
Okay.
Okay, so I, I have one other thing that I'd like to see. In the, the balcony areas where the residential units above there in that elevation, is there a way that we can have green plantings or something that would be maintained by the, the building? You know, not individual owners having to maintain a flower bed or something, but some way to have some vertical green something.
Yeah, are you talking about the, in, the private bays?
No, either right outside, you know, sometimes they'll have what looks like window boxes, but instead of being within each of the individual balconies, they're actually on the out, the exterior part of the balconies and it's maintained by, it's part of the common area.
You'd lose the transparency in that.
And you also would be a, a maintenance issue. I mean, then you'd have to go through the unit to get to the, to the planter.
You would use the same method that you use for cleaning the windows or you'd have, if, like, say if it were along one side of each of the balconies, then the watering system would come from the roof and, you know, filter down and water each of the little columns. It would be kind, it's not, I wouldn't make it a condition, but it would be. It would be kind, it's not, I wouldn't make it a condition, but it would be nice to see something green and consistent. I mean, you could work it into the pattern, into the verticality, verticality there, is that the word?
I, I think that's something that may come in the future, it's a neat idea, I don't know if the technology is-
Oh, no, the technology is definitely around.
Oh, it is?
Yep, there, there are living walls and vertical gardens, I mean, there, it's definitely around.
I mean, it gets into leaks on balconies.
No, no, it's, it's actually really good technology and it, and it works, it's part of the stormwater protection plan in a lot of cities. It's, I mean, it, it's, it's not-
We approved one at West Elm.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
But he didn't like that one.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, but that was only one store.
Yeah, it was ground level too.
I mean, you know, there's, I would like to see, I, I wouldn't make it a condition, but I would love to see more green, natural elements to this.
That's what we're doing on the roof.
So, yeah, but you can't see that, I mean visually as well, I mean, because the more green you have in an urban space, the more calming it is and the better it is for the residents as well as the pedestrians, so.
You know, Angela, I have mixed feelings about that above, I, I have the same concern on the ground level. I think there needs to be a touch of green on the pedestrian level where you have entrances and you've mentioned that you intend to accomplish that. But I think trying to incorporate planting boxes or something specific, somebody who has a balcony and they want to put a pot and a terrace and a tomato plant or whatever they want to put out there, that's fine. But I think it's really going to change the building if, and I'm not saying that's necessarily bad, but if, if they were to go and then incorporate green boxes on each of these balconies, that's going to be a substantial change to the building.
I guess-
And I'm not sure that's going to improve the sex.
Like individual planter boxes per unit, but in those areas, for instance, if you had some kind of a, a trellis type, you know, visually, picture this one area that runs vertically from the roof, straight down, say maybe the left or the right side of each of the balconies. And it would just, it would just offer some green, natural elements for each of these areas. And you could, you could keep that consistent vertical pattern going, you wouldn't have to break it up, it wouldn't have to be individual. If it were kind of a vine or a trellis element, it would be watered naturally, you know, if you use, depending on what kind of planting you use. I mean, you don't have to do it, but it would just be nice. There's, there's, it's just very cold to me in air, in urban areas and we don't have enough green. And what green offers and does, I mean, there have been tons of studies that it improves the quality of life and the feeling of the people in the space and around the space, so there's ways to do it. And, you know, I'm not going to say how to do it or, but I, it would be nice if-
I mean, the other thing to realize is that it is a, it is a hard image to the street, but on the inside of the building, there is this wonderful green oasis that we spent a lot of time designing, incorporating green elements, using uni-excessive runoff. So, you know, there's this kind of dialogue that develops between the outside of the building, which presents this sort of harder edge to the street and then this wonderful oasis or a spike that happens on the inside. And we'd sort of like to maintain that.
And I think the other thing that's different about this building is that it's all glass. I mean, it's going to be this trans, not a solid structure, but a translucent structure. I would typically say, yeah, let's go for the green, that's usually what I'm saying all the time, but I'm not sure that that is going to improve this design.
This building shows his life because you see into the building. And the pictures they showed of the buildings on Folsom, you've got the sense of light and shadow and, and seeing into it. And I think this is absolutely incredible building. I think it's the best building I've seen since I've been on the planning commission. And particularly in this neighborhood, we need a, a real landmark and I think this would be it.
What does everyone else feel about the idea of greening up the balconies?
Well, I, I appreciate where Angela's coming from, but I think it, it is, it would destroy the image that's trying to be presented here, which is sort of a, a light box, if you will, and something that's translucent and, and modern. And there will be the courtyard area, there will be landscaping along McDonald, or West MacArthur. And I think with the street trees and maybe doing something at the ground level as, as Jim and, and Art were suggesting, I think is good. But I think for this particular building, it would destroy the, the whole design premise for it. But I do have one comment and I would like to see, and I'm glad that you said that you, you've done this in a building in San Francisco, the louvers, and I would like to see them operable. And the main reason for that is, it's, people, when they're home and the lights are on and there's, you know, there's cars and activity on San Pablo and it's diminishing the privacy aspect in my pers, point of view. And I would hate to see a bunch of curtains going up because that again is going to defeat the purpose. So if you had louvers that were operable, you know, you could adjust the angle a little bit so people might feel a little bit more comfortable. And you would still maintain that look that, that is the whole point behind this project. We've talked about the translucency and I can just tell you, you know, you're in the privacy of your own home and you may or may not, you know, you might just want to walk around. And, and I think that we need to have something that's going to provide a little bit of privacy for people.
Big condominium projects, you know, some people pull the curtains and some people don't.
But what I, yeah, but what I'm saying is, is that for those that want to have curtains, if you can just have these, these louvers having a little bit more flexibility and you can still maintain that look.
It's going to look like a closed can.
No, it isn't.
You won't have the light, the whole point is that whether it's through a curtain or through the glass, the light goes out. And if you've got louvers that drop all the time-
I understand that, but I'm just saying as someone that, you know, well, I'm not going to go there, but it just, you know, if we could allow for some, some greater discretion for folks.
Do they control those electrically? How does it work?
It's electrically controlled, you know, I mean-
It's a huge cost difference.
Well, I know, but-
Even being feasible.
I don't know, Angela, Gail, do you not, are, do you understand where I'm coming from?
I completely understand, but I-
I don't think the cost benefit.
On this point, I think visually, it would take away from the integrity of the look. So I just think, so I think it's funny, it's like on the one hand, the plants would ruin it, but, you know, being able to open clothes. But I, actually, I have to say, I agree with your point here that that is part of the look of the building.
It is.
And people can have curtains or, you know, those really contemporary-
Horizontal sun, horizontal loops, horizontal interior shades.
They can do anything they want inside.
And they're going to do that anyway, because some, for some people it's just a design feature, they want curtains, you know, so.
That's true, that's true, okay, forget it.
Go ahead, Art.
Could you, could you go back to the San Pablo elevation?
Good, I want to see that too.
Now, when I asked you before about the narrow sidewalks, you said that, that, well, it's all plate glass. But now it turns out it's not plate glass.
No, it's plate glass behind the horizontal sun shade, so in this area which we're showing is a setback, that's glass.
Between these two, what is the space in there?
Sorry?
What, what is-
That's where the bays were.
That's where the bays are.
Between the bays, what is it?
This?
Yeah.
It's, there's horizontal sun shades and then storefront glazing behind it.
So it's not glass?
Well, it's glass behind the horizontal sun shades.
I just-
Well, I'm sorry, are those fixed shades?
Yes.
It's all fixed.
The metal shades.
Nobody likes the idea of flexibility in the shades.
No, I, I think it's a, I think that's a mistake on the- On the street level, that's a mistake, it's going to look like a prison.
Yeah, my, my problem is-
It's much bigger space, isn't it?
No, that's, that's, you look off to the far left and you can see the wider spacing. That, what they're proposing here is the same two-inch spacing. I think it's going to look like a prison down there on the street level.
My-
Oh, I thought it was further apart.
I thought it was too.
No, it's the same product that you have at San Pablo.
I'd like to-
Well, on the corner is what, is where we, is where it's going to be further apart. So, you know, part of the concern is increasing the spacing on the ground floor. That's certainly what we could do is we could use the same horizontal louvers that we were using here, which say are twelve inches apart, and use them in this level, this area here, this area here, in this area here.
But it's commercial, you want it as visible as possible. Who cares about the sun? They're not going to bed or whatever. I mean, you, the whole idea is to keep it as open. This is a complete surprise to me, I had no idea that there was a proposal to put the, the skin on the glass at the street level. I just think it's going to look like a parking structure.
Could you do it with just the three rows instead of-
I think we'd like to keep some of that language, but I'd certain, maybe what we could do instead, as you see the one, two, three rows here, is rather use the horizontal malleon system of the glazing. So we could back joint the verticals, use the horizontal malleon for the glazing system just to give that sense of horizontality. So kind of keep, you sort of keep the form, but you regain your transparency.
Does anyone else have concern about what this is going to look like on the sidewalk?
I, I do.
Well, if that's the proposal, if that's my proposal to change it, to use the, to use glazing, just use the horizontal louvers of, of, horizontal malleons of a glazing system, so then they would be twenty-four inches apart. I mean, you're going to need that on a glazing system regardless. And then, so then you'll have your plate glass, we back joint the verticals, right? So you still, you've still got that long horizontal lines, which is what we're trying to keep, but you regain your transparency.
I think that would be preferable because the louvers, aluminum louvers coming down to sidewalk level are really, really cold looking.
It just becomes a fence then, really.
Yeah, it'll, it'll look like a parking structure. So what you're suggesting is using the spacing on the left edge of this image?
At the corner?
That, the upper level?
Correct, yeah.
Bringing that down all along the sidewalk frontage, other than the open glass corner?
Correct.
Do it at just these four?
One, two, three.
Or three?
Yeah, it would be the one, two, three, four, this would be absolutely clear.
I mean, the horizontal things, there'd only be three of them.
Correct, yeah.
No, I'm sorry, what did, what are you proposing?
The horizontal-
Between the bays?
So from this bay to this bay on the ground floor, what we would do is emphasize the horizontality of, of the building by using the mountains of the aluminum glazing system and back glaze, and back glaze the vertical system. We'll get as sort of a narrower style as possible. So we'll still maintain that horizontality, maybe the spacing's every twenty-four inches on center or thirty-six, so there's, so that's a twenty-foot space, I mean-
So there'd be no projection?
Right, exactly.
It would be flush.
Well, before you said, when I was complaining about the lack of public space, that many of these stores might open up these walls. Well, how would that affect your design? Now you're going to punch through here periodically with-
Are we going to sit here and pick apart the design bit by bit? Or are we going to like propose, like you come up with a problem, we're proposing a solution, which I think maintains the integrity of the building.
That's our job.
We need to approve this tonight, we're not going to get another chance at this. So we need to understand what it is we're approving.
Under any circumstance, the tenant could say, I want the whole thing set back. And they could pull out those walls and pull it back.
Well, I, I don't want to pick on your plan, but I, I would say in my opinion, just as a general policy, that your relationship of the building to the sidewalk, in my opinion, is totally inadequate.
Okay, well, I was just in East Village in New York where the sidewalk content is wide.
May I finish, may I finish?
And it's a wonderful street.
May I finish?
Sure.
And then you can have your say, I'm sure. I think it's totally inadequate, I think the ten-foot sidewalk is, is not doable. The corner is completely crowded with buildings, there's no space at the corner. I, I would not support this project unless you were able to pull at least a lower level of that building back so we have some good relationship between the public and the private. And I don't think it does it. And therefore, I, I, I think that part of the, of the design, as I say, is inadequate in my opinion.
Did staff realize that this treatment was going to extend all the way down to the sidewalk? This louver system, the tight louver system was going to extend all the way to the sidewalk?
Yes, and I did talk with one of the architects about, you know, making just the entire ground commercial space glazed instead of having those louvers, but, you know, they didn't want to do it.
They said no. Can you explain, I just drove down Third Street in San Francisco and they have the new platforms, which include large glass panels. And already, they've been scored by people using the system and it's only been open for a couple of months. Huge scoring all over the glass panels. Can you explain how that's going to be prevented on this?
How going to prevent graffiti on the building or people scoring glass?
Scoring the glass.
Yeah, I-
Is this a special treated glass? There's no way to avoid that?
Not that I'm aware of, I mean, I think you sort of slowly change a neighborhood, you sort of try to, you know, try to deal with it on the social level, but I don't know if you can really deal with it on the architectural level. I don't know of a, of a glazing system or a glass that would be tough enough to withstand, you know, at least someone that's commercially available and that we can use on a market rate residential project.
What, what, what's happening with the tenants on the other side of San Pablo across from here? Because they've all got the, um, different kinds of-
Yeah, but none have a continuous glass front like this. Some have sculptural elements for protection on front of it, welded sculptural elements. Most have typical storefronts.
Have they had, do we know, have there been any problems with the-
I haven't noticed, but the smaller panes of glass-
Typical storefront, you could still scratch the glass pretty easily and-
Well, I was just wondering, like, has that been a problem here?
I haven't, I haven't seen it, but I haven't seen a building that is this inviting.
When we did the, the New England Holocaust Memorial, which is a series of six glass towers, and a lot of the concern was, what about vandalism? You're creating a project about the Holocaust and about antisemitism, it's prime to be destroyed, it's glass. And in the fifteen years the project's been erected, there's never been a case of vandalism. It's something beautiful and I think when you create something beautiful, people respect it. And so that's one of the ideas we, we're trying to do with this building. This is, this is, the intention here is to create a major work of architecture for Emeryville and Oakland. And my sense is people actually begin to respect that. It's when you sort of start sticking up, you know, stucco boxes here and there with large swatches of CMU, CMU block wall, that's when you have a problem.
I, I just, I, I agree with Art that we have a problem on the ground level fronting San Pablo and I'm not sure how best to resolve it. I'd like to at least see the southern bay, the, on the right edge eliminated, and that wall from that point where the bay sits to the corner of Thirty-seventh be open glass. And then you've got some, you, you're not interrupting the verticality, your concern for the verticality there. But I just, if you've got a commercial use, it's, or subdivided commercial use behind this space-
I think your point is taken and I, and I honestly say, we're going to go back and look at this. The louvers are not going to go down to the ground for that, for the last twenty feet. We want to maintain the horizontality, so we'll find a way of using the mountains on the aluminum frame system that are, let's say, thirty-six inches apart to still create that horizontal line, but the net effect at the end of the day-
And that's embedded in the glass? I'm not, I don't understand this alternative you're suggesting.
So you have, you have an aluminum framed window, right? There's, there's the outside frame and then there's a series of mountains. If it's a large piece of plate glass that, because glass only comes in certain sizes, you have to have intermediate malleons to support that glass. So what we're suggesting, I mean, even if you look out here, is you, you increase the width of the horizontal ones as opposed to it being an inch and a half, maybe it's three inches wide or two inches wide. And the vertical you compress, so it's a, it's a narrower style. So, you know, you still, what, what you would have is exactly what you have on the, on the curtain wall of this building, which is, you know, by all intents and purposes is absolutely transparent. But we would just try and rather emphasize the hor, that horizontal line and, and compress the vertical.
And you would eliminate the sill on that? So you wouldn't have, the sill would not extend out of each of those window spaces?
Correct, it would be, I mean, the sill, or the actual malleon itself has a mountain that's going to be out by quarter of an inch.
But it won't extend out three inches or four, okay. And so what you're trying to do is just continue the, the horizontal pattern down the face of the building?
Exactly, just keep these U's happening.
May I suggest as a condition of approval under design that you simply say to eliminate the aluminum louvers on the ground floor? And then the architect can deal with the horizontality issues. And that's your concern, right, the louvers on the ground floor?
The, I just, yeah, I don't-
I think we all agree on that.
I want to keep it open and visible, that's my-
So eliminate the louvers.
That sounds good.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and I think under the same design, I thought there was agreement that we were going to eliminate the third, the southernmost bay. Wasn't there agreement that we wanted that bay out of there?
Tie the other two together?
Or explore that, right. And explore tying the two bays together at a ground level treatment. So-
There'd be one continuous bay in the center?
Or they'll explore that idea, I mean, structurally, they're going to have to go back and look at it, but yeah, it would be-
So we'll look at joining, pulling, it's basically we'll be pulling the facade of the building back to this line.
Only at the ground floor?
Right, only at the ground floor.
And it would still have to have structural columns out of the old line?
Then at the rest of the way, and all the-
And then eliminating the bay at the, at the-
Southern, the southern third bay. So Charlie, you caught those in the design condition change, okay. Were there any other concerns or comments? I think overall, it's going to be an outstanding building, I agree with Buzz, it's probably the best building we've seen. One of the, we also, we were, I won't use the word duped- One of the, we also, we were, I won't use the word duped, but some of us were really impressed with the design of another building that's now been constructed. And one of my concerns is always value engineering, and what happens with what is a wonderful building in its image, as it's presented, and what ends up getting built because of the cost. And I'm really concerned about that, especially in this neighborhood, and with the change in the market. And I'm not sure how to address that. Some of that has to do with materials, exterior materials, which is one of the reasons I've pushed understanding exactly what you intend to do here, as far as we have. But you've shown us a sample, and that's what's going to end up on the side of that building, rather than something plastic or something else.
That's what we hoped, yeah.
It's, I think it's really in staff's hands to continue to push with you in making sure we get the quality product that we fully support. At least, that's my sense.
I'd just like to ask for, to go back to the bicycle parking issue?
Yes.
For clarification on that, the condition is on the bottom of page 14. It says a minimum of 95 spaces, set forth below 86 in an enclosed limited access area. Do you still wish to keep the four for customers of the commercial space on the sidewalk, and the five for guests of residence also near the residential entrances? Those are separate spaces. Those are.
I think those are fine.
No, 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 you said the.
In the sidewalk.
The V4, V1 through V4 visitor spaces would become green space, that would be planted area?
Oh, the parking spaces, yes.
No, that's.
I'm talking about the bicycle parking.
Yeah.
You're referring to the cars, car spaces.
It says 95 parking spaces, but then it talks about cars underneath that.
Which, I'm on page 14. Which condition are you talking about? Because I don't see it.
See, under, under three little i, it says four parking spaces for customers in the visible locations in.
That means bicycle parking spaces.
It's under the bicycle.
Everything, everything under item.
Car parking spaces that would be converted.
Everything under item B is bicycle parking spaces. So item three, Roman, little Roman number three, that's for bike racks on San Pablo Avenue, or bike racks for four.
Spaces, that's not bike racks.
It's bike racks for four bikes.
Yeah.
And then item, little i, is five.
Yeah.
That's bike racks for five bikes for guests. So you want to keep both of those, right?
But that would be on city property, isn't it?
That's typical.
That's city property.
Yeah.
That's on the sidewalk.
I think that's fine.
I think it's okay.
Okay, I just want to clarify, you're not, you're not eliminating those. It's only the ones, the secure ones, that were.
Correct.
Saying are per the plan.
That's my suggestion.
The two, little two i, that's the only one that's changing? Is that what?
Yeah, little two is being deleted, and it's being changed to say per the ground floor plan.
Right.
Thank you.
Did you want to go through the other, read the language to the design change? And wasn't there one other change that?
The roof garden, roof access.
Well, I thought that was just something they were going to work out.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Well, okay, maybe, yes, this would be a good time to clarify.
That could be in the design thing as well, consider that.
I mean, you're talking about a substantial cost to bring an elevator up to the roof.
But I think they want to do it, actually. So consider, what, do you want to read the language to the design condition?
Do you have somewhere?
This would be on page 18.
We've, we've been trying to follow what things you want in the conditions, and what things are up to staff to try to get, and what things they should just think about. So we'll do our best to summarize what we think are in the conditions. The bicycle parking thing that we just discussed, eliminating the four visitor parking spaces, vehicular parking spaces along the driveway, replacing that with landscaping. Also replacing the bicycle parking exterior parking area on West MacArthur, also replacing that with landscaping. You wanted a fence along the east property line? Did you want that in the conditions?
Would that be along the east and?
And the southern, and the south property line of the finger.
Except where it interrupts an existing building, yeah. They should have a fence.
Except where that, that house is.
Right.
Okay.
Modify the exit on the south half of the east edge of the site to 37th, to, if possible, accommodate a two-foot planting area?
Two-foot planter area on east side of the driveway?
Right. If feasible.
Let's see. Extending the elevator and stairs to the roof is at their option, right?
If feasible, yeah.
So we wouldn't put that in the conditions.
Eliminate the louvers on the ground level.
Right, eliminating the louvers on the ground level and combining, and eliminating the southern bay on the ground level, and exploring combining the two center bays on the ground level.
That's only on the commercial space, not on the.
Right, on the San Pablo frontage.
On the ground level of the, yeah, San Pablo frontage, right. But, oh, so the louvers would come down to the ground level on the.
37th.
MacArthur frontage, and 37th.
And the east side.
Yeah, on the east side.
You talked about a number of other things, but I don't think anything else was added to the conditions.
That, that was it for my design issues, from what I heard, in terms of the majority position of the commission. There was some discussion about greening up some of the balconies, but I sensed the majority of the commission did not agree with that. And then also having.
No adjustable louvers.
Adjustable louvers, and that didn't get full support, anyway. So, were there any other design issues that we missed?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Jim Martin?
Yes.
I just have minor edits and additions.
Oh, yes.
On page one, page one of the conditions of approval, 1A4, I just, it says a parking variance to allow four guest parking spaces, or 16 are required minimum. Like to change that, a parking variance to waive one guest parking space.
To waive one park, guest parking space?
Right, they are one short of guest parking space. They need 16, and they're providing 15.
Okay.
Which are going to be combined with commercial spaces.
Okay.
On page four, the first where it says housing.
Sorry, just take a step back. Wouldn't you want to change that to waive, now we'll have to waive five? Because if we're eliminating those four parking stalls on the alley.
That takes that into account.
It's actually, it's a delta.
That already takes that into account.
I've done the number, don't worry. On page four, housing set-aside program, in the last, in that paragraph, I just want to clarify and make it clear that all affordable units shall be located within Emeryville jurisdiction.
All right.
And that's it.
And before you vote, I would like to point out a couple of errors in both resolutions. There are several places where the date of October 25th, 2007, is noted, because that was when we expected you to be acting on this, and those were not caught until just now. So wherever it says October 25th, in either the resolution ND0701, or the other resolution on the planning permits, that should be changed to November 15th.
Okay, so we need a, unless there's any other discussion, we need a resolution on recommending adoption of the mitigating negative declaration for the project as the first resolution. Do we have a resolution on that?
I'll so move.
Do you have a second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Beranco?
I support.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Jeffrey?
Aye.
Vice Chair Donaldson?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Six ayes, the motion is approved.
And then we need a resolution for recommending approval of the conditional use permit, design review, and parking variance for the project.
I so move, as we've agreed.
Modified, okay.
And that also includes demolition of the existing buildings.
Correct.
I second.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have a roll call on that? Unless there's a substitute motion?
Commissioner Beranco?
Aye.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff?
No.
Commissioner Jeffrey?
Aye.
Vice Chair Donaldson?
Aye.
Chair Martin?
Aye.
Five ayes, one no, the motion is approved.
Will we trust you'll work out the design details with staff?
Now, we will take this to the city council, with your recommendation that it be approved. We will amend the conditions of approval per your direction tonight for the city council to consider. This will be heard by the city council on December 4th.
Great. Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
So, the last item on the agenda is the commissioners' comments. Are there any comments of commissioners? I actually have a comment, and that is a broader comment about design issues. And we had that teleconference looking at neighborhood, character, and preservation ordinance. And I thought that was a really useful exercise. And I just, I think we're looking more critically at design for projects, and I think there may be some education that we could use on how to look at design, and maybe even the language around design. And I don't know whether it's something staff can think about and get back to us on, you know, how to maybe be more effective, especially for these critical projects, in understanding what's presented to us. Not all of us are architects or have a planning background. So I'm just thinking, it might be useful to have some training, similar to that one day, that was so useful, to have that teleconference training session. So maybe, Charlie, you could look into something like that?
Sure, we'll see, the APA has other similar kinds of programs, we'll see what they can.
Right. And Charlie, you and I today discussed the paper mill project.
Right.
And along the design issues that we've now faced that project twice through study sessions, and have really not gotten very far constructively. So staff has suggested that a consultant, actually, a consultant has been brought in to assist the applicant and us in looking at where to go with some of the design issues. And staff, staff suggesting that we have a committee of the planning commission, subcommittee of the planning commission, that meets sometime in December to work with this consultant and with the applicant's architect, and then come back before the next, well, I'm not sure when it's scheduled to come back, but allow then the applicant to respond.
Whenever it's ready.
Right?
Right.
So I'm wondering if anyone on the commission, I'm happy to sit on that subcommittee.
I'd be glad to, as an architect, unless that disqualifies me.
No, I don't think so, Buzz. Is anyone else?
I have positive interest.
Okay.
It's going to be in December?
Sometime in December.
We've scheduled, we had about a two, two-and-a-half-hour brainstorming session with the applicant and the architect, and these folks, they're called Origin Design Networks. They've done similar kinds of work for Concord and also Oakland. So as I say, we had about a two-and-a-half-hour brainstorming session with them and the applicant and architect today. The architect is going to go back and think about it, and come up with some, you know, some redesign. And they think they'll be ready to meet again on December 10th. That's a Monday, December 10th at 3:00 PM. We can obviously change that time if it doesn't work for you, but that's what we've tentatively scheduled.
Does that work for the two of you?
Works for me.
Okay, well, we've got three folks.
Okay, so.
Subcommittee.
Commissioners Martin, Cardoza, and Beranco. All right, very good, thank you.
And do we know where that meeting would take place?
It'll take place here in the office in the second-floor conference room.
Is anyone else allowed, I assume this is a public meeting, or how is that? No, it is not.
No, it's not a public meeting.
Okay. So, any other comments? With that, we will adjourn the meeting at.